Evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is March seventeenth, Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and one. We will call the meeting to order, and it is six P. M. This meeting is conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph and Brown Act. The city council meeting will be livestreamed on the city website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public may participate in this meeting remotely through an electronic via meeting via phone by dialing six, six, nine, nine hundred, nine, eight, three, three, enter I D nine, three, four, six, seven, four, seven, five, four, five, four, hashtag followed by star nine on your phone to speak. Comments will be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine, three, six, three, seven. I call the regular meeting of the Madera City Council to order at six oh four. Alicia, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Protem Viegas. Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Gallegos?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Montes?
Here.
And Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Thank you, Alicia. Would you all please join me in the invocation and please stand, led tonight by Pam Greewell, Madera Seek Temple?
Thank you, everyone. Actually, I'm gonna be kind of sitting down because of the way the computer is set up. So I appreciate you guys all standing. And there we go. It was kind of confusing for me to start with because I'm bilingual. I wanted to say English and everything. So I'm keeping everything in Punjabi as possible. Thank you. Adhast, merwan, merwan, sab meran, merwan, sirih bahagwajiki, fathesh, mondi, sahib, bhaashim, mondi, pashay, dasmeen, pratham, bodhis, mrike, gurnan, kli, taya, prangatik, guram, dadas, se, hoi, sahai. Arjun, har, gomind, nos, sri, a, rai, sri, chaya, dithth, sab, du, jay, gurte, ek, bahadres, mri, ek, ronam, de, a, veta, a, sab, thain, hoi, sahai, dasmeen, pashah, sirih guru, gobinsan, kalgitar, sachchay, pashah. Sab, thain, hoi, sahai, sat, shrikal, bh, thay, andar, ke, bollo, ji, sirih, wah, he, guru. Dasam, pashay, ande, shrop, shri guru, gran, sab, jagdi, juth, hajar, hujur, jahra, jhur, kalju, de, bohut, naam, ke, jahar, halt, palt, ke, rak, jak, lo, par, lo, ke, saai. Hajar, najar, dasam, pashay, ande, shrop, tas, ke, paat, rika, thay, andar, ke, bollo, ji, shri, wah, he, guru, wah, he, guru. He, pramathma, shri guru, jo, vi, singa, ne, karan, ne, a, ditya, des, kaam, le, sab, na, na, lak, lak, shukran, na, kar, deh, haan. Es, le, saad, sang, nu, sha, es, et, ra, he, es, es, raj, di, saad, sangat, nu, shakti, de, ni, ke, apne, das, e, asu, la, de, chal, sakhiye. Dasan, de, sirt, e, hat, rakho, kam, krudlo, mon, kar, tum, bchaao, naam, daan, gribi, daan, sikhi, daan. Siddh, daan, prosa, daan, shanti, baksho, ji, ta, apse, ap, sab, na, de, sirt, e, hat, rakna, charna, na, jodlo, kalju, nu, dur, karoo, dasan, de, hirdya, te, vaso, tutti, gando, merwan, jo, paavi, so, kam, karain, jo, na, paavi, so, na, karain, jo, paavi, so, mat, bu, sang, de, mi, jo, na, paavi, so, na, de, mi. Dithth, paame, dithth, rakla, dithth, na, paame, dithth, na, rakhi, dithth, rakhi, ab, de, charna, vich, rakhi. Digge, takke, nind, di, sangat, na, de, mi, jis, de, milne, karke, tuski, visar, jamo, sar, de, var, de, sansar, tu, rakla, sat, ur, kalju, de, tath, e, chode, haan, tu, ab, di, god, vich, rakho. Maya, de, shal, shal, sundar, sundo, had, de, ke, vich, ala, sth, ko, rahm, karro, apne, charna, di, dar, baksho. Paane, vich, le, a, paana, mitha, la, ke, main, kitna, jata, haram, koron, koi, a, de, sha, mo, dos, chor, gunon, gar, loon, harami, pa, vana, na, par, grami, jetha, smund, sagar, nar, praya. Tith, yogan, humare, dyaa, koru, kush, mehrab, a, dub, de, patthar, taare, kapu, phreyo, jaise, darad, kush, de, sh, badheesh, na, bu, jasa, mera, man, bikya. Ba, moy, a, kuj, par, na, suj, wah, he, guru, baba, guru, nan, ik, sab. Grib, nu, bakshlo, nidda, mangta, de, darte, khada, haan, ke, darta, de, saare, andar, nu, ga, ke, tere, darte, a, man, te, di, chori, vich, khair, pa, mangta, ka, khal, ni, na, jaye. Apde, dardi, sift, baksho, main, gun, gaman, de, raat, baba, hin, inkar, na, visri, na, basari, na, pulli, na, palai, aap, de, nu, aap, de, karin. Sera, hat, bakshin, smut, bakshin, dab, de, dardi, sift, bakshin, yeh, maharaj, jo, kitna, so, baba. Jo, kar, karar, e, so, vi, baba, jo, ge, ton, koronge, so, vi, baha, baha. He, wah, he, guru, sachchay, pashah, baba, ji, aap, jide, charna, de, vich. City of Madera, Mayor Santos Garcia. Te, unna, de, councilman, jine, vi, a, sare, hi, te, unna, de, sare, police department, Madera, shirts, department, Madera, thob, unna. Sab, de, agge, le, ya, kardas, bainti, kar, deh, haan, sab, nu, shakti, a, de, ni, a, is, fasle, le, bhot, changge, jo, vi, fasle, kar, na, sare, mader, le, le. Unna, de, hak, vich, jine, vi, unna, de, hak, vich, kitte, jan, deh, haan, sab, asli, te, aap, de, man, nu, ton, sab, di, taraki, le, ho, fasla, kita, haan. Mere, pramathma, city of Madera, nu, dukkha, klesha, nasa, bhar, ya, ton, ganga, ton, drugs, ton, bcha, ke, rakna. Corona virus, de, naal, bhot, hi, sad, de, mader, de, vich, lokha, di, death, ho, gi, haan, unna, nu, vi, wah, he, guru, sachchay, pashah, unna, de, pravara, nu. Shakti, de, ni, shanti, a, bakshni, a, ke, ho, accept, kar, sakhan, ki, unna, de, jola, one, last, hui, ni. Ho, wah, he, guru, sachchay, pashah, aap, de, de, charna, de, vich, hi, gat, dars, ya, ke, is, mader, nu, bhar, ya, ton, dur, rakna, apne, charna, vich, navas, de, na, pravara, nu, paana, man, na, da, man, bakshna. He, pramathma, mader, vall, no, mader, ni, a, bhot, hi, shot, a, business, a, nu, job. Covid, da, karke, kar, karke, band, business, a, nu, khatte, pah, haan, lokha, vich, suk, shanti, bakshni, ke, ek, du, jadi, madad, kar, sakhan. Mere, pramathma, aap, de, agge, ardas, request, kar, deh, haan, ke, aap, de, charna, vich, sab, na, le, wah, he, guru, sachchay, pashah, suk, shanti, bakshni. This, sab, na, nu, gush, a, de, ni, a, te, thud, de, ni, ke, sab, fasle, thi, kar, sakhan. Aap, jide, charna, vich, manjoor, karne, ka, ta, ardas, bainti, kar, deh, haan, akhar, baad, ka, ta, bol, ya, gom, maaf, karana, shri guru, nan, ik, naam, chard, di, kala, tere, paane, swat, de, guru, ji, ka, khal, sah, wah, he, guru, ji, ki. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Pam Greewell, for that. Would you all please bring me standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Taylor Takata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greewell and Mr. Takata, for that, bringing us into our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the approval of the agenda. I ask my colleagues, do I have any changes or any issues regarding the agenda? Seeing, hearing none, seeing none, I ask for the city clerk to have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gallegos?
I do have a correction, Mayor Garcia.
Go ahead, Ms. Gallegos.
Um, I would like to pull. I'm looking for it. I have my agenda. D four?
So, Ms. Gallegos, I think that's on the consent items. Did we want to approve the agenda and then pull that item when we get to the consent? Oh, I'm sorry.
D four is not consent.
I'm sorry, I heard D four. Apologize.
D.
B. Oh, B four, oh.
B, D four, as in dog.
D four, under petitions, resolutions, and agreements. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Are we gonna pull that item? Because that is an item of discussion, right?
Yes, that's, um, correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager Rodriguez, is that the item that our attorney was going to go over with us?
So, correct, item D four is the, is the code of conduct. And I believe what Councilwomen is requesting this evening is to postpone that discussion to a future date. Currently, our, our legal counsel, Hilda Khan, too, is not on the call. She will be joining us later on. However, I think the request of Councilwoman Gallegos is to postpone it to the next meeting. The city's next regularly scheduled meeting would be April the twenty first, because we are not gonna have a meeting the first, the first Wednesday in April, because as we know, Madera Unified School District is, is, is gonna have a spring break here, and we thought the appropriate thing to do to allow council and the community to take a week off was to cancel that meeting. So hopefully, I captured your request correctly, Councilwoman Gallegos.
You do. I just have some questions for attorney on some of those items, and with her not here, I don't, it can be answered. But if my colleagues want to go ahead with D four, I'm okay with that. That was just my concern.
I move to adopt the agenda with the exception of item D four, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I second it.
And I'll make a correction, that item D four to be postponed for a later future agenda.
There's been a motion by Councilmember Jose Rodriguez and second by Councilmember Montes to postpone item D four to a future date, which would be April the twenty fourth.
First, twenty first.
Twenty first, excuse me, April twenty first. Alicia, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Final vote is six, zero. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Um, our next item is a public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked, but are not required, to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Alicia, city clerk, do we have any public comments at this time?
No, Mayor. I don't have any emails and nor do I see anyone on the phone.
Thank you very much. I'll close public comment. At this time, we don't have any written communications. I would like to then open presentations under item one, Department of Public Health update on COVID nineteen. Do I see Ms. Boss somewhere? Sarah Boss, are you, are you?
I'm here. Hi.
Okay, thank you. I see you on the screen.
I should've started talking. That would've bounced me up.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Thank you very much for coming and joining us today, so.
Thank you. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you very much.
And happy to be with you all this evening. Our data is heading in the right direction. We are hoping to see data continue in this trend of case rate coming down and good positivity rates as we now have an adjustment in the tier structure. So when the state reached two million vaccines given out in the Healthy Places Index zip codes that have been identified across California, it adjusted the tiers to where movement from purple to red, the requirement is a case rate of ten instead of seven. So it's easier for us to move forward with the population being vaccinated. So right now, we're at eleven point three adjusted case rate, county positivity, four point four percent, health equity positivity, six point five percent. It's moving in the right direction. We continue to encourage people to test if they're out and about, and we are increasing testing through regular surveillance testing and contracted outreach with schools, skilled nursing facilities, and certainly those who are engaging in organized sports. So our testing rate is still above the state median. That's good, at three hundred and ninety-nine per hundred thousand. Our vaccination allocation has been pretty level, but has increased over the last month. So between February fifteenth and March eighth, it doubled. And so we look forward to increased allocation, because there are a lot more people who are eligible. In the last week, eligibility was expanded to include people who are living in congregate residential settings. So that expanded to our county jail population, and so we already started vaccinating those folks as allocation is available, starting yesterday, working through those who are our most risk first. Public transit workers are eligible, janitors, and already spoke with Arnaldo about staff in the city who are providing sanitation for like parks, restrooms, and things like that. And also individuals experiencing homelessness. We know that, we got a phone call from Police Chief Dawson, Lawson, I put Dino and Lawson together, Dino Lawson. And I know that they are eager to help us outreach to our homeless population. We have already vaccinated individuals who are at the Madera Rescue Mission. We prioritize those individuals based on outbreaks that have occurred, and so they are all vaccinated already. We would like to kind of really prioritize Johnson and Johnson vaccine for our homeless populations, so that it's easier to ensure that they're fully vaccinated. And we will not have any more Johnson and Johnson vaccine for a couple weeks. And so we're anticipating the increased manufacturing of the Janssen vaccine and would prioritize homeless when it becomes available. Others who are currently eligible include those with chronic conditions. There's a list on our website, which is maderacounty.com/COVID19vaccine. Those individuals will not be required to provide any paperwork for demonstrating their illness due to privacy and HIPAA concerns, but they will be required to do a self attestation when they register. So they have to acknowledge that they're being truthful and indicating that they have a chronic condition. Others that are eligible are people who have physical and mental disabilities that make them high risk for poor outcomes with a COVID nineteen infection due to access to care. I did meet yesterday with the ADA Advisory Council for the city of Madera, and we're in conversations and reaching out to our health plans to see how we can strategically get those who are physically disabled vaccinated. So we're likely going to be scheduling some drive-through clinics specifically for that population as well as working with Anthem Blue Cross and Calviva to be able to help us with other outreach strategies. So that's in process. There are ongoing updates to guidances, and we encourage people to use our community feedback form to get questions answered quickly.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Always very informative. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for Sir, the Director of Us? Wow, that was short and sweet. Well, thank you very much again. Thank you for accepting our invitation to join us and giving us valuable information. Thank you. And your staff, make sure that you tell your staff that we appreciate everything that you all are doing.
I will. Thanks so much, and glad to be with you.
Thank you. Next, we have one of the fun parts that we have as part of our council. And this is a proclamation recognizing Madera High softball coach Judy Shawba. Judy, welcome.
Thank you.
I will read, I will now read the proclamation on behalf of the Madera City Council and the residents and people of Madera. Officer of the mayor, city of Madera, state of California. Proclamation, recognizing Madera High softball coach Judy Shawba. Whereas today, the city of Madera recognizes Coach Judy Shawba for coaching her one thousandth game as head coach of the Madera High softball team. And whereas Judy Shawba is a Maderan, born to bleed coyote blue, she attended Madera High School and played on the first Madera Coyote softball team in nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas after graduating Madera High, she attended Fresno State University and helped lead the Fresno State softball team to the first Women's College World Series. Congratulations for that. And whereas after Fresno State, she returned to her hometown and coached the Madera High softball team to win three Valley championships while facing, while teaching physical education. And whereas Coach Shawba's dedication and passion was recognized in two thousand and sixteen as CA High State Coach of the Year and her league's Coach of the Year in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-four, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and nineteen. And whereas in nine hundred and ninety-five games as Madera High softball coach, she has won six hundred and sixty games, which amounts to a sixty-six point six-six-three winning percentage. She is the winningest female softball coach in central section history. And now, therefore, be resolved that I, Santos Garcia, mayor of the city of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim this seventeenth day of March two thousand and one as a day in celebration of Judy Shawba coaching her one thousandth game as head coach of the Madera High softball team. Congratulations.
Thank you, city council and Mayor Santos.
Would you like to say a few words to us, please?
I sure would. I would just like to thank the city council and you, Mayor, for this honor. I love Madera. It's my hometown. I love our kids. I love our community. It's just, I, I don't, I tell everybody I meet, I really don't work. I love my job. I tell my kids all the time, you find something you love to do, and it's never a job. I wish I could coach and teach forever, but I know my days are getting closer to that golden retirement plan of mine. And I see one of my assistant coaches, my right-hand gal over here, Coach Armiento, was on my first team and was that first Valley championship team. And I wouldn't have this success if I didn't have great assistant coaches and gals that played for me that have gone on and now become coaches. So it's a team effort in Madera. My success is just a reflection of all the great kids, great parents, and great assistant coaches I've had over the years. So thank you, city council, for this. It is a commune, and that's a lot of games. I think it means I'm getting older. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to your one thousandth, one game, if you haven't had it already in these last couple of days.
We start this Saturday. So the girls are looking better all the time. Hopefully, knock on wood, our numbers keep going in the right direction, and we'll get to have our season.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also, congratulations to your assistant, Armiento. Melissa, congratulations also. Thank you very much. We will now move on to item number three, proclamation recognizing the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties Free Tax Preparation Service, VITA. Officer of the mayor, proclamation, the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties Tax Free Preparation Service, VITA. Whereas free tax preparation services are now available through April fifteenth, two thousand and one, to residents in Madera and Fresno counties who earned fifty-seven thousand dollars or less, as well as seniors and disabled in the two, tw- two thousand and twenty tax year provided by the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties Free Tax Preparation Service. Whereas these working families and individuals may be eligible for thousands of dollars in tax returns, including the California Earned Income Tax Credit, the Federal Earned Income Tax Credit, the Golden State stimulus, stimulus, and the Federal Child Tax Credit. And whereas the United Way Free Tax Preparation Services in the two thousand and twenty tax year served over eight thousand tax filers and saved filers over one point four million dollars in filing fees, returned more than fifteen point three million dollars to local taxpayers to be used for families and individuals to help make ends meet. And whereas taxpayers can call two-one-one or eight-six-six-five-five-nine-four-two-one-one to find out if they qualify and to schedule an appointment. And whereas residents have an alternative option to file for free on their own by visiting wwwmyfreetaxes.org. Now, therefore, be resolved, be resolved that on the seventeenth day of March, that I, Santos Garcia, mayor of the city of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, proclaim that the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties be commended for offering this valuable free tax preparation service to our residents, and that we urge all eligible residents to take advantage of the service during this tax season. Signed on this seventeenth day of March two thousand and twenty-one, Mayor Santos Garcia. I now will introduce Ashley Reese, Program Director for VITA and the Free Tax Preparation Service.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, as well as everybody on the council. Thank you. I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes.
We're very, very excited and very honored to be here today and receiving this proclamation. As you know, United Way is an organization that fights health, education, and financial stability of every person in every community. Madera being one of our specialized or focused communities that we are fighting, fighting for. So we're excited to be here and continuing to provide these services to all members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. I am a former member, and I see, I am a former member of the Board of Directors of the Fresno and Madera Counties United Way. And I know that the great work that you do for our residents, and I thank you for that. I also recognize Casey Austin, who's also a member of the United Way here with us. Thank you very much for joining us, Ashley.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that. And we will now move on to a workshop. This item A1 Mid Valley Disposable Quarterly Update. I believe Mr. Joseph Kalakoff from Mid Valley is here.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor, councilmember, Staff Joseph Kalakoff, President of Mid Valley Disposal. I got a quick PowerPoint, so I'm going to share my screen right now. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, really quick overview for tonight. We'll talk about some of our recycling services that we're doing. The, we'll touch on the community cleanup event that's ongoing right now. I'm sure there may be some comments on that. Some of the truck investments that we've made, our service capabilities, we have, I have a couple of slides on our, on our composting facility that's new here in Kerman and a recycling facility in Fresno. And then more importantly, some of the, what's happening with Cal Recycle and some of the new regulations of 1383 that are going to be hitting in January 1st of 2022. So in the community, as you see right now, you know, last year was a, you know, a difficult year, obviously for everybody. Us with being out and interacting with the community at events, that was a challenge to get that outreach out. However, we did some direct mailers and some media. We are still providing last year our community cleanup event. And as you know, in your community, it's ongoing right now in the streets. We're looking forward to the Earth Day events, Christmas parades, and annual recycler of the year, as well as the two annual scholarships of $5,000. We did have some big requests from the Madera Unified for some new recycling containers for organics. So that's implemented early this year. And when they come back up, back in school, we'll be ready to go with them. And we added a new Sharps kiosk for the Sharps next to the, the fire station. Thank you, Mayor, for getting that online with us. Couple of some of the older bills laws that we have, we've got 100% compliance with the AB 341, which is a commercial business, as well as the AB 1826, which is the organics law that was passed a couple of years ago. And so that is, is ongoing and we are completely compliant with. We do have 1383, which is a new one we'll talk about in a little bit. That comes in January 2021. Same diversion programs that we had were ongoing in e-waste, hazardous waste, the battery drop-offs. The big one this year, you can see is the Bye Bye Mattress Program. We are getting truckloads and semis of mattresses out of the city right now. The new Sharps kiosk. They did update the threshold of 1826, which is the organics bill to two, two cubic yards. So it kind of, they lowered the threshold to get more subscription on that program. And we are complying with that as well. Looking at the container grants, beverage container grants, those are ongoing, as well as the annual reports with Cal Recycle. So again, you can find all this information at the front city hall. Your kiosk, the city services, and the bulletin, it's on our website. We direct mail these out as well. We are going to try to implement the residential decamination. We did not do it last year in 2020 due to COVID. But we looked at it as an ongoing program moving forward, which we go out and we educate the carts on, on, we physically look at the carts and leave education on those who may not have the right things in the recycle cart or in the green waste cart. So that's coming in, in 2021. One of the things we, we did, we did talk about were our trucks. So if you notice that you see all brand new trucks in your city. We, we took the fleet from a diesel, a diesel fleet in the last two years and implemented 100% of CNG. It's a lot quieter in the community and obviously the air benefits are, are great. One of the, one of the additional safety things, components that we kind of put on the trucks implemented the last two years is a third eye program. And so what this does is it captures video of on-road activity. And if there is some sort of a, a jolt and a G-Shock in the truck, it sends us a video. So we can look at the driver's behavior. Ultimately, it makes the, the, the driver's behavior safely and keeps your community safe as well. So that is, it's actually been a great program. We can train, we use these videos for training for new hires and then ongoing, ongoing training with issues that stop signs, things around the schools that we see. And we have seen an 85% decrease in, in incidents, which is, which is our goal. Right here, you'll see the recycling facility again. As we start to open back up, we didn't do very many tours last year. We know one, one accomplishment, I, I do want to say that at our staff is that we've, we continue to operate this facility 100% during 2020. You know, there were about 50% of the facilities throughout California who, who shut down for six months. And that waste, that recycle stream ended up going to landfills. I can say that 100% of the recycling collected from the city of Madera was sorted, processed, and sold. And so, you know, with, with, with that, I commend any of my staff that are watching tonight. We, we thank you guys. But we would like to offer a, a tour at any, any given time this year when things start to open up for anybody, part of the council that wants to count our city, that wants to see this facility work. It's got optical sorders. It's a state-of-the-art technology. We, we, it's, it's a regional facility located in Fresno, but we process about 40 jurisdictions through there every day. One of our new ventures that we started about three years ago and we completed the expansion is our composting facility you can see here. This is located in Kerman. You can see that there's those bunkers to the right. Those are actually little ovens that we put food waste and green waste inside. And we can turn that into an organic compost, which in turn goes right back into the ag market around us. You can see there's ag all around us in these pictures. So we had 60,000 tons of capacity. We added another 30,000 tons. Those, those eight bunkers that are, are open right now. So we're looking to expand these programs and increase, increase our throughput of organic compost. 1383, okay, this is the big one. So this is, this has been ongoing for about three years now. We finally got the regulations finished from Cal Recycle in October of 2020. You know, we had thought that a lot of cities and we fought for an extension to this due to COVID. You know, instead of giving us a one-year or two-year extension on the implementation of 1383, they added a enforcement mechanism instead that kicks in in January of 2022. This is a, it's a short-lived climate pollutant. The cost of this bill unfunded mandate to the state of California exceeds $20 billion. And again, it's an unfunded mandate by the state that starts in 2021. And what the difference, one of the differences that we've seen with some of these other bills that have gone through Sacramento in the last 15, 20 years is this one has a lot to do with, with jurisdictions and the jurisdictions support of these programs. So as you can see, the jurisdiction responsibility is on the right. You have a right to provide, to provide a collection service for residents, residents and businesses of food waste in all their, in their, in their green carts. That's ongoing. We have that. We've been, we've had that in place. The second one is establishing an edible food recovery program. So they have a pretty, a pretty large goal of, of 20% of all food waste in, in the city of Madera to have some food rescue program. This is a fun, kind of a fun goal, and it's where you simply find a business, a restaurant. It could be a grocery store that, or a school that has extra food. And you find people who are in need of nourishment. And you put those, you network those two together where we're not throwing away that food. We're actually food sharing it. It asks for additional education outreach. So it asks you specifically has quarterly education and outreach, waste audits, new labeling of carts and bins. And it requires the city to procure a certain level of compost or renewable energy back from suppliers in the area. Again, you have to secure access to recycling edible food recovery. And then there's monitoring and compliance as part of this. And a couple of the things that we do have, I showed you that the camera system in our trucks, we actually have them in the hopper. So when we dump the carts, we can take pictures of that. So that's what part of that compliance and education going forward. So again, the key implementation dates on the bottom there, we've got takes place January 2022. Local, require local governments to take enforcement on people who don't subscribe or participate by 2024. And they want a 75% reduction in organics disposal by 2025 with a 20% increase of edible food recovery. So you may have questions on this. I can discuss this here in a little bit, but this is a, a huge, a huge new regulation that's coming down out of Sacramento that starts next year. You know, as I mentioned, we are, we are ready for 1383. We saw this coming down the pipe and expanded our food waste composting program in Kerman. So we've got the capacity, putting in the edible food recovery, the education outreach, which we currently do, you know that. So it's going to be interesting on the procurement of CNG or recoverable compost, where that comes from. You may have parts of your fleet that are already operating on that, so we can use some of those. But it's measuring it and submitting the data to Cal Recycle. There's record keeping, as I mentioned, and, and organic waste generators waivers. So those who may hit that threshold but don't actually have any food waste on site, maybe an office complex, you can get a waiver there. So next, future, getting, getting some amendments done with our agreement to have the 1383 compliance. So the city is in 100% uninterrupted service throughout this. Experienced quality team, we, we have there the, the ability to implement 1383, track it, guaranteeing composting capacity, your third CNG trucks and our customer portal and local office in, in Madera. Additional services, disaster emergency disposal, our annual cleanest roundup, ministry illegal disposal grants with the homeless encampments, illegal disposal sites, and then develop and implement programs required under the new updated recycling laws. So with that, I can keep this on. If there's any questions, we can go back to any slides or talk about any other questions that you may have. I can stop sharing now.
Thank you very much for that report, Mr. Kalakoff. Do we have any of my colleagues wishing to ask a question or comment on this report? Councilwoman Gallegos.
Welcome, Mid Valley. I just have a question that I've gotten from residents, and I haven't seen it yet because my area hasn't come up yet. But some, a couple of people writing before I ask the question, so I've read it myself, which I haven't received. Are we requiring residents just a certain amount of space for the cleanup that they can film in front of their homes? Do we have that? Are we putting that in place this year?
It's, it has always been there. And really quick, I just want to introduce Annette Quoc and Casey Austin from our, from Mid Valley. They may be of help with some questions as well. We've, there's always been a, I think it's a four cubic yard plus a couple of appliances and some green waste, which is a normal, probably larger than a normal pile that we see. And those directions have all been mailed out. If you haven't had your, so what we did to eliminate some of this illegal disposal in the last, we, we implemented it last year was we, instead of sending the, the entire map to the city, the six-week map out, we actually take two weeks at a time and mail the two weeks out, and then two weeks out, and then two weeks out. And we found that, you know, once we get to week six, it's not, we don't have, you know, trees and, and trucks and, and huge piles of, of information, of trash out in the street. So it's, that's, that's helped a little bit, but the, those directions are on the flyer.
Okay. And so is that something new or something we've always had, they just never saw it?
We've always had it.
Okay. I have some people freaking out from it and wondering if they're going to get more over. And I said, well, I need to read it before I can ask a question to see exactly what it's saying.
We are, we are currently picking up everything. If we get to a spot where there's seven houses of trash in front of a little house, and we know it probably, there's no way it could have generated from that single house, then we'll talk with the, the homeowner at that point.
And I understand that leak perfectly because I know we had some illegal dumping on a gentleman that was an elder that tried to stop it and we had to get Chief Lawson on it. So it was, I under, I get it. I understand it. I just wanted to be clear when people do approach me that I've gotten the right information. So thank you for that.
Yeah. And I, and I just want to say that with the code enforcement, the chief and with public works, it's, it's been a, you know, a three-pronged approach out there with, with, with these folks. And my, I know my team's taking pictures and digging through the, the illegal disposal, pulling out billing, you know, mailings and finding addresses and, and looking at license plates. And, and so it's, it's all hands on deck right now.
All right. Well, thank you and your team for making our city cleaner and beautiful by getting rid of a lot of this trash. So we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Cece.
Councilwoman Evans, did you have your hand up? Because I saw a hand up briefly.
I did. I just wanted to ask. And I'm, this may sound crazy, but televisions, where do they dispose of those?
The televisions are e-waste and we are your certified collector for e-waste. So they can, we, we're picking those up right now. We have a, a third party going around and collecting with ourselves. We, I, I don't, Annette, how many boxes of roll-up boxes or truckloads of, of e-waste have we just picked up so far? Tons. So we are collecting them on the street right now.
Well, thank you guys so much. It looks so nice. And hi, Casey, and hi, everybody. Thank you guys so very much for all you do and just continue the good work. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I don't see any more comments from my colleagues. Is there anyone from the public wanting to ask a question here, Alicia?
No, Mayor. I don't have anyone on the line or any emails.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So thank you very much for your team. I was very impressed this year, the, the, when you guys, when your team came out in front of my, 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 my home, they took care of business and then did a very good job. They continue to do a good job. In the, they're out there now cleaning up our, our city. And, and we want to just thank you very much for your, for your hard work and your team's hard work to take, to take care of our city and make our city a good place to, to live and raise our families. So again, Joseph, thank you very much. Thank you, your team. Make sure that your staff knows that we appreciate everything that you all do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Alrighty, so we will now move on to item B, Consent Calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar and it be, and it will be considered separately. Alicia, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on a consent calendar item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. I asked my colleagues, is there, I will now ask for a motion from my colleagues.
I still move to approve the consent counter as presented.
Okay. Motion made to accept the consent calendar as presented by Councilwoman Gallegos, seconded by Councilman Villegas. Alicia, would you please call a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas? Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Final vote, a motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. We will now move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D1 is a Sixth Amendment to the Madera Municipal Golf Course Operation and Management Lease Agreement with SGM Inc., DBA Sierra Golf Management Incorporated. I believe Mr. Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of the council, Arnold Rodriguez, city manager. I am going to share my screen with you. I, I do have a presentation. So I believe you can see my PowerPoint, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So as the mayor indicated, the item before you this evening is a Sixth Amendment to an existing golf course arrangement that the city has with Sierra Golf Management with us this evening from SGM, would be Jeff Christensen, who, who's, who's the owner of SGM. So for the benefit of the council, considering we do have a couple of new council members, the city owns the golf course located on the east side of Road 23 in between Avenue 17 and Avenue 16, immediately to the west of the city's airport. There are two golf courses locally. There is this one, which is a privately held golf course. And I'm sorry, public, because it is owned by the city. And then we also have the country club off of Road 26. That, that is a private golf course, and that's technically in the county of Madera. So a little bit of background. That, that is a private golf course and that's technically in the county of Madera. So a little bit of background. The existing agreement is a one-year agreement. It was a one-year extension that is set to expire at the end of April. Over the last couple of months, our city staff has been in discussions with, with SGM, identifying some of the issues. In terms of the pandemic, in terms of, of a couple of other items, which we'll be discussing in a few minutes. And collectively, we felt that the best approach. Would, would be to bring a short-term agreement before the council for council's consideration, the short-term agreement being two years. One thing we noticed when we entered the one-year agreement, a year ago just flew by. And while we've been in the middle of pandemic and we've learned a lot, there's still a lot of uncertainties related to the pandemic. Specifically be because some of the variants and we simply just don't know where the community or the sport of golf will be moving forward. So again, staff is proposing a twenty-four month agreement that would allow SGM to continue without any interruptions in service. And one thing that's, that's a little nuanced in this agreement is staff is recommending that, that, that the city have the opportunity to enter into two thirty-day extensions. So really it would be twenty-six months, just in case something happens in the meantime. Because as we all know, while twenty-four months sounds like a long time, we know it's going to be on top of us before we know it. For some of the, the newer council members, a little bit of background on the golf course, the city purchased the property around in nineteen eighty-nine. And they constructed a golf course. The city operated the golf course with city staff until two thousand and nine. At that point, the city decided to, to do an RFP. And SGM was a successful operator. There was a second agreement in two thousand and thirteen. There was a third agreement in two thousand and fourteen. There was a fourth agreement in two thousand and nineteen. And then we had the most recent, which again was a twelve-month extension of the existing agreement. And I do have a table later on that summarizes and compares. The agreements. So again, a couple of key, key points here is that staff again is recommending an extension of a twenty-four month agreement. That would maintain the reduction in base rent that they're currently paying today. However, one thing it does do is that SGM. Would pay an additional fifty cents to the city per round of golf. So right now SGM pays the city a dollar twenty-five for every round of golf. As part of the new agreement, that number would go up to a dollar seventy-five. The golf course right now is experiencing in the past year, there's been roughly forty thousand rounds of golf played, which is significantly higher than the previous thirteen or fourteen years. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers going back to the, to, to the nineties or the, or the early two thousands. But in terms of, since Jeff has been operating the golf course, the number have rounds this past year have been significantly more than any other year. As part of the agreement as well, SGM would make approximately forty thousand dollars of what we would call capital improvements, specifically to eleven bunkers. Every bunker is roughly a little north of forty thousand dollars. However, he would be me, he would be making those improvements. As part of the agreement, we did add a language that he can either make twenty thousand dollars of improvements per year or forty thousand dollars in the initial twelve months of the agreement. Another item that SGM would be responsible for would be to connect to a pressurized water line. On located in Avenue seventeen, it's buried and that water line belongs to Madera Irrigation District. SGM would be responsible to pay for all costs associated with, with that connection. And you do have a couple of slides where I'll, I'll try to capture what that means. SGM would also be replacing sixty-five of the existing golf carts with brand new golf carts. That, that cost is approximately half a million dollars. And then as councils aware, there is a banquet hall at the golf course. Unfortunately, we cannot have any banquet right now because of the pandemic. However, as part of the agreement, SGM would share five percent of the building rental revenue in year one, and that number would go up to ten percent. So. So if year two, if the pandemic regulations cease or if we change, and we have the opportunity to host more. Events there, then obviously the city's revenue will increase. It's obviously very difficult to, to, to project what those revenues could be. Because again, we simply don't know what the status of the pandemic will be a year from now or two years from now. I'd like to think that a year from now, everything's going to go pretty much back to normal. But if you would have asked me a year ago, where would we be? I don't think I could have predicted where we're at today. So the chart on the screen and this was provided in the staff report, I tended to, to, to summarize the key points. This list is not exhaustive by any means. However, what I attempted to do was capture the original, the original for the purposes of this chart includes amendments two, three, four. And the original agreement, the existing agreement was the one-year agreement, again for twelve months. This is what we're at today. And then this is the proposed. So the initial agreement was for ten years. The existing, the one we're in right now is for, is for twelve months. The proposed is for twenty-four months. The base rent historically, SGM paid the city forty thousand dollars per year. Because of the pandemic and because we know we couldn't have any events, we understand from talking to Jeff and golf across the board. That the food and beverage side of is down in golf roughly eighty-five percent. Due to the pandemic and then we also know that they cannot host any events there. So with that being said, council felt comfortable a year ago to, to cut that in half. And we would propose to continue that. The pro-round rate to the city, so this is every round of golf that's played, Jeff and his team historically compensated the city two dollars per round. Because of the pandemic, when we signed this agreement, council may recall, I believe it was the very first meeting that the city ever had on Zoom. It was, it was the week after the schools had closed, so we didn't really know exactly what was going on. This is when Governor Newsom had just put his words out and everything was shutting down. And so because of that, we went down to a dollar twenty-five. As part of this agreement, it would increase to a dollar seventy-five per round. Capital improvements and this would be, these are costs borne by SGM. Historically, it was fifty thousand dollars a year. During the pandemic year, it went to, to zero. However, now we are proposing to go to twenty thousand dollars per year, but in discussions with Jeff, he's going to exceed roughly forty thousand dollars in the first year and that would carry over. That, that's a minimum, not the maximum. And from talking with Jeff, we, we were very conservative with that figure, but in talking with Jeff. He'll attest that that number is going to exceed the twenty thousand dollars or the forty thousand dollars. The other item that we've included, which would be a capital cost to Jeff, and he would be compensating Madera Irrigation District would be connecting to the water line. In Avenue seventeen. One of the things that, that's. That, that's a challenge at the golf course is that the golf course relies on one hundred percent groundwater. So there are water wells out there and those water rolls are always running. Because they have to water the golf course. Over the past couple of years, something we've been attempting to do is to look at different options to provide water. To the golf course and specifically surface water, not groundwater. We, we all know that we have some state mandates under stigma and one of the things we're attempting to do is to mitigate that. That water line, once it's connected, is surface water. That is not groundwater. SGM would have to purchase that water from Madera Irrigation District. The rental fees for the banquet room, historically SGM has not compensated the city, rather that, that figure was included in the base rent. In the pandemic year, it's also zero, but with no events. And as part of this agreement in year one, so beginning. May first, if, if Jeff have it, if SGM hosting events there, the city will receive five percent of the revenue. And then in year two would be ten percent of the revenue. And that revenue, I should add, is for the banquet room rental, not food and beverage. And then the golf cart replacement, historically, the city did not require that Jeff and his team replaced the golf carts. One thing that we've added this year is that he replaced the golf carts. These are sixty-five new golf carts at an estimated cost of about half a million dollars. And so one of the things that, as, as we were negotiating and. During the negotiations last year, it was made very clear by council at the time that we wanted to make improvements at the golf course to make sure that visitors. Had an enjoyable time and that it reflected well on the city because again, when we pull up to the golf course, it says city of Madera and it has our logo. And so one of the things that we had identified last year was that we felt the need for the golf carts. So as part of this agreement, he would replace the new golf carts in a couple of months. And again, the reason we put estimated is because if Jeff, if, if Jeff can, can persuade a company to sell in sixty-five golf carts for less than half a million dollars, that's great to him. But as we all know, golf carts are expensive. In, in terms of the water at the golf course, the golf course again is completely serviced right now by, by well water. And that's underground water. And as part of our discussions, we're attempting to add some additional options. So the golf course does not rely one hundred percent on well water. And so this red line, it's not in the exact location, but there is a Madera Irrigation District line that's buried right in Avenue seventeen. So as part of our agreement with SGM, he would have to connect to that line. And that, that of course is an additional benefit in case one of the wells ever stops working or if it's inoperable. Then obviously he can draw water from that well, I mean, come from that line. There's a canal on Avenue twenty-three, on road twenty-three. That's an open air canal that's also owned by Madera Irrigation District. There, there's another ag grade canal. It's open air, which is along Avenue seventeen. So the golf course is actually bounded on three of its sides by Madera Irrigation District facilities. One of the discussions that we've been having as part of my discussions with Jeff is we have been talking with Madera Irrigation District and at the same time, we've been talking with FAA. Who regulates the airport. And one of the things that we've been attempting to do is to, is to enter an agreement to have a recharge basin right in this area. SGM's on board, MID's on board. The city council has already proved an agreement with MID where MID would pay for the infrastructure. The city owns the land and we would split the credit fifty-fifty. The benefit to that as well is that Jeff would be able to purchase MID water and he would actually be able to fill in these water features. When the golf course was, was originally constructed, those were all water features and during rainy seasons, you do get some accumulation of water there. Unfortunately, some of those discussions have stalled at FAA and we're still having some ongoing discussions. However, I'm confident that if, that if FAA gives us the green light. Then the city, MID and SGM will enter into agreement where there's been, where there's mutual benefit. And that's one of those items that's taken a long time. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of meetings. We thought we've made some really good progress at the FAA, MID and SGM. Unfortunately, we just simply don't have a resolution to that. One of the reasons why this agreement may appear that it's coming a little late is because we're attempting to get some resolution prior to us bringing it to council because it was such a big win for all of us collectively. But like I said, unfortunately, that hasn't come to be and we're still working on it. The other thing I should highlight is the city does owe debt on the golf course. The city borrowed money to construct the golf course. Right now, the city is paying approximately three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in this year, year, and these are calendar years, by the way, not, not fiscal years. So this year, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, next year and in two thousand and twenty-three. And then in two thousand and twenty-four, the city will have an additional payment of a hundred and sixty-four thousand. At that point, we'll have retired the debt and we will not owe any money on the golf course. In addition, the golf course leases fourteen acres from the airport. So the city pays the airport to city facilities. So the golf course inner fund pays the airport fund sixty thousand dollars for the lease of those fourteen acres. And so that's simply for the benefit of the council. So with that being said, though, staff is recommending that the city enter into the sixth amendment with SGM. And again, that's a twenty-fourth month extension, which would begin on May the first and it would run for two years. Council should also be made aware, even though we don't have an agreement right now with FAA, we're confident that if we can get a clearance, we'll be able to work with Jeff, MID. And, and the airport to make sure that we can have additional recharge facilities on that property. So with that, that concludes my presentation, Mayor. We do have Jeff from SGM who's here. But with that, I'll turn it back over to you and your chief mayor.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say anything, Jeff, regarding? The golf course before we move on?
Thank you. Arnaldo did a great job of going, going through the past history of the golf course and basically our water challenges that have been throughout the facility almost from day one. With our lowering water table, surrounding ag, the super wells, all the things that take away from our aquifer. It just becomes more challenging, not only Madera Golf Course, but every golf course that we have to sustain the kind of water that we need to, to irrigate. An eighteen-hole golf course. And we've done a great job over the years mitigating our footprint out there. We've taken areas and turned them into non-turf areas. It's not perfect, but it's absolutely necessary. We can't, we know that we can't irrigate a hundred and fifty acres anymore. So we try to condense that into a smaller footprint each and every year, and we've been successful. And you know, once we get some, some secure water, we'll be able to do some things that will be beneficial for the city, like light up that driving range with full water. And we could use that down the road as a auxiliary source for soccer or necessarily always have to use that as a practice facility for the golf course. We use a lot of things for the golf course and the multi-use track meets that we've had out there in the last five years. So we're trying to do a lot more than just be a golf course. It's a beautiful facility. COVID's really, you know, done some super neat things for golf, believe it or not. If you can imagine, you know, like Arnaldo said a year ago that, you know, we thought the big tsunami was coming for, you know, this industry. But actually it's really, we've seen an increase in golf, not only in youth, not only with seniors playing the game again. But a lot of minorities, women, we feel we're going to have a sustained growth for another decade and longer. We certainly know that we can't sustain the increase of rounds that we had in this last pandemic year. And we, our stats are showing us in Q three, Q four and beyond, we'll start seeing a decline and minus six, minus nine percent. But we're, we are couldn't be more thrilled with what we've seen and it's going to pay off in large dividends for decades to come with the plus fifteen percent. That we've seen in the last year. So that's really good for golf. That's good for the city of Madera. That's good for recreation and. Having a golf course in the city is always a benefit. This is park and recreation at its finest. And whether or not one hundred percent of the city residents play it or not, it's a great, great thing to have. City Madera has been great to work with. Arnaldo and his team has worked hard with MID. I think we're going to see some neat things with some water features out there that this golf course really needs. And we're really proud and happy of where we've taken this in the last eleven years and look forward to a couple more years.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. I'd like to welcome our city attorney, Hilda Montoy. Welcome back. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Well, I'll bring, bring it back to my fellow council members. If anyone has any questions or comments regarding Mr. Christensen and Mr. Rodriguez's report. Mr. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I personally wanted to thank Jeff for keeping this long relationship with the city of Madera. I know that the relationship started back during a recession. And you know, this relationship has continued and we hope to see that it continues for, for many years. I did have a question in regards to the capital improvements. I noticed that on the staff report, we are showing. Eleven bunkers that will be replaced and I think that's going to happen, not sure if that was within the first year or, or in the second year. Can you elaborate on that, Arnoldo or Jeff?
Yeah, I think you've counted, remember. My understanding is that Jeff is going to start working on those immediately and to try to complete them before the summer. And Jeff, if you can corroborate that, that was my understanding.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to try to get every one of those done in two thousand and twenty-one. I think it's imperative that we try to, to finish those in this calendar year. So we're going to do everything we can. I'm pretty confident that we'll get all of those done.
Good. And so I think my only concern that I've always had with the, with, with the course is its capital improvements. You know, I know back in two thousand and nine, the original agreement stated fifty thousand dollars yearly. And I think with this extension, that'll make three years where only forty thousand dollars. And I think with this extension, that'll make three years where only forty thousand dollars will be applied to capital improvements. And, and I do get the benefit of having new golf carts, Mr. Christiansen. I think that's a great added feature for the course. But more importantly is just the deferred maintenance of the course. And, and I don't know if not adding additional capital improvements to that, if that somehow deters. It's, it's, it's value, meaning like bunkers. I know that you said eleven of them will be done. And is there any other bunkers that might have to be done at some point that, that are in need of capital improvement?
There isn't probably a golf course out there that hasn't had deferred expenses over the last two decades in California. We're all racing to the finish line this last fiscal year because we all have some additional funding that we just happened to fall into. So eleven bunkers, that's our target. I won't, I won't disagree with you with capital improvements throughout the facility that have been deferred. This was well before SGM took over. Things, when you're working on a twenty-four month contract, you know, it's, it's difficult to fill a yellow legal pad here up. And, and try to get all those done in that short time. Obviously, Councilman Rodriguez was in the ad hoc committee last year and we had some bigger visions when we had longer term before COVID. It's not to say that we aren't going to continue to discuss those with city staff and the ad hoc in the future. That is definitely our goal. We know that food and beverage is a big component to, to golf and COVID just done a number, as you all know, to food and beverage. How long it's going to take to recover? Nobody knows. No one has that crystal ball. The clubhouse was already a wobbly ship well before COVID. We have to, we have to walk that one carefully and try to find a really, really solid plan for that in the future. I have some really good ideas that I think I'll share, you know, down the road with, with AdHoc and, and Arnaldo and his staff. But certainly we don't, that's the minimum amount, Councilmember. We'll definitely, each and every year, we put more than that in it. Sometimes it doesn't show. If you walked in even to the, to the food and beverage area, the bar, you'll see a new floor that we put down during COVID. We paint that we put down during COVID. We do a lot of different things that we don't know. So that's just the bare minimum. You know, certainly we'd like to have a participating partner down the road in food and beverage that could help with lighting, parking lot. All these things are incredibly expensive. So golf is just finding its footing again. Let's see where that leads us in the next year or so. And I think that's the exercise of this, of this temporary extension to see where this leads us. So we can bring back to you, the council, some really definitive long-term plans.
Certainly, Mr. Christensen, again, thank you. As you, as you noted, I was part of that ad hoc. And I think, you know, coming down to the stretch, I think we're coming to see a, a big light for, for the golf course. But unfortunately with the COVID, obviously that set us back. Like you mentioned earlier, there is a boom in golf and, and, and you would appreciate that as a council member, looking after the, the city's assets. You know, making sure that we don't defer these assets. But I think you've been a, a great partner in the last decade. And I think we can certainly work on those future capital improvements that can enhance the, the, the golf course. I would also ask Mr. Arnaldo and maybe the, the rest of the council is to add an additional ad hoc member since we do have a vacancy. For any future, any future agreements or any future amendments that we'd be part of that conversation. So we can pick up right where we left off this, this past year and continue to improve the, the facility. Like Mr. Christensen had said, I think there's big plans that we add and I'm sure we can certainly continue to enhance that golf course.
Thank you. Thank you, Member, Councilmember. Are there any more of my colleagues that have any comments or questions?
I tried to lower my hand, so I apologize if I raised it.
Not a problem, brother, not a problem. All right. City Clerk Anita, do we have any comments or questions from the public? Let's see any.
No, Mayor.
Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry. Since we do have legal counsel here, I did want to ask, I don't know if this would be the appropriate place to do this. But if we want to nominate or possibly select a, another member to the ad hoc committee, would that be done when it's agendized? Or would that be something that we can do here?
I think that you can recommend an appointment and then it would be put on the agenda.
Perfect.
So we could basically reconstitute the, the ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Thanks again, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Are you, are you going to be recommending anyone or is there going to be taking volunteers?
Again, I don't know if I can, I would certainly ask that I keep myself in the ad hoc, but I'm not sure. I think the nomination would come from you and then that would come back to the council for official approval or recommendation. Is that how you see that, legal counsel?
Yes, it's, it's like a advice and consent. Yes.
All right. So I'll, I will ask my council members to, to contact me if they are interested in serving. Yes, Councilwoman Gallegos?
I was just going to say that I would be interested in serving on the ad hoc.
Okay, all right. Well, then we will bring it back to council as we agendize. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for volunteering. All right, we will move on to item D two, consideration.
Did we vote?
No.
Were, were you calling for a vote on that item?
Yes, Mayor, I sure was.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
Yeah.
Alicia, would you call the roll call vote, please?
I believe we need a first and a second.
We need a motion, we need a motion and a second. That's correct. Do we have a motion to approve, to?
A first.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve. The item was presented.
Second.
I believe that we had Councilwoman Evans make the motion and seconded by Councilmember Villegas. Alicia, would you please call the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item D two, consideration of amended order. Approving the city of Madera of response to Madera County Grand Jury Final Report nineteen twenty dash two oh five. Unveiling truths of local law enforcement. I believe Mr. City Manager Rodriguez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And if it's appropriate, I'm going to punt it over to Chief Lawson. Chief?
Well, thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. It's my pleasure to present tonight the response to the Madera County Grand Jury. Share my screen with you here. Okay, looks, looks good. Good. Go in here. So as, as you know, every year, the Madera County, County Grand Jury is seated. A new grand jury is seated. They go around and they, they do findings, investigation reports on city and county entities. On, on the operations, daily operations, maybe improvements. Citing things that are done well. And then they submit a report to the different entities. And then the entities are allowed to respond to said report. Now in that, the, the Madera County Grand Jury issued a report titled Unveiling Truths of Local Law Enforcement on December twenty-first, twenty twenty. The report released to the public on December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, twenty twenty. The, by law, the city council has ninety days to submit a written response. The written response must be prepared and submitted within specified guidelines provided by the California Penal Code. Penal Code Section ninety-three point zero five includes a specific manner for responding to the findings. And the recommendations provided by the grand jury's report. So discussion. One, response to a finding, in a response to each grand jury finding in a final report, the responding party is statutorily required to indicate one of the following. So you must respond whether you agree with the finding or you disagree wholly or partially with the finding. In which case, the respondent shall specify the portion of the finding that is disputed. And shall include an explanation for the reason therefore of their finding. In a response to each grand jury recommendation in their final report, the responding party is statutorily required to indicate one of the following. The recommendation has been implemented. In which case, the responding party must include a summary of the implemented action. Secondly, the recommendation has not been implemented, but the recommendation will be implemented in the future. In which case, the responding party must include a timeframe for the implementation. Response to recommendations, the recommendation requires further analysis in which the case, in which case, the responding party must include an explanation, the scope and parameters of an analysis or study. And a timeframe not to exceed six months from the date of the final report's publication. For the matter to be prepared for discussion by the applicable agency or department officer, head or governing body being investigated or reviewed, or the recommendation will not be implemented because it is unwarranted or unreasonable. In which case, the responding party must include an explanation therefore. So with all of those legalese and how you must respond and what their findings are. So findings, this is what the grand jury found. The Madera County Grand Jury finds that the Madera Police Department works on multiple levels to build and strengthen positive relationships with community members. Response to the finding, this is what we responded to. The city agrees with this finding. The Madera Police Department works tirelessly to build and strengthen positive relationships with our community members. The second finding of the grand jury, the Madera County Grand Jury finds that there are fifteen funded positions that are currently unfilled at the Madera Police Department. So our response to this, the city disagrees partially with the finding. The city does not have adequate information to ascertain how the grand jury obtained this data. Many parameters dates because it's always fluid, how many vacancies an organization has at any given time. But with that said, and regardless, the city strives to fill vacant positions to ensure adequate service levels that the community has come to expect. While staffing levels may sometimes be fluid due to attrition, the police department, your police department currently has six vacancies. The city budgeted for these positions and is aggressively working to fill each and every one of these positions. Finding number three from the grand jury, the Madera County Grand Jury finds that the Madera, that Madera County is not effectively handling the individuals Madera Police Department identifies as having a mental health crisis. Or which we call a fifty-one fifty. So our response to this finding, the city respectfully notes that this finding pertains to a matter that is not under the control of the city. Recommendations now, the Madera County Grand Jury recommends that the Madera Police Department continues to foster the relationships within the community. Through the efforts already in place and be open to suggestions brought by community groups and individuals. So our response, recommendation to this, this recommendation has been implemented. The city appreciates the Madera County Grand Jury's recognition of the city's efforts to foster and strengthen relationships within our community. And we continue to strive and will continue to build those bridges within our community. Recommendation number two. The Madera County Grand Jury recommends that during the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, current open positions at the Madera Police Department be filled. So our response to that recommendation is this recommendation has not yet been implemented. But the city plans to implement it when it adopts the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So basically just those positions, if they're not filled during this year, we'll carry over and we'll continue to fill those. And bring us up to full staffing. So Madera County Grand Jury recommends that the Madera Police Department immediately work with the Madera County Board of Supervisors to provide adequate mental health services. So our response to recommendation three, this recommendation has been implemented. More specifically, earlier this year, I attended a meeting with the Madera County Mental Health Department where the focus was improving mental health services. The police department is also assisting the mental health department pursue mental health grant opportunities. And we continue to work on a daily basis to address this issue. We have a very good working relationship with mental health. They currently have a new director. So she's kind of getting her sea legs under her right now. But their future really looks bright, in my opinion, for the two organizations working together and addressing this issue. So the recommendation. It is recommended that the council review the proposed responses to the grand jury. And approve the responses as presented or provide direction of changes to the proposed responses that we gave tonight. And that concludes my presentation. I know it's not as eloquent as the city manager will be. But all in all, I, I want to compliment our city manager, city staff, the council, and mostly the, the organization, your police department. That is a very good review from the grand jury. And they really did point out our strong points and what we strive to do within the community and we will continue to do. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that, Chief Lawson. As always, great work to you and, and our city staff for preparing this response to the grand jury report. So I want to thank you for that and continue the good work. I'll open it up now to my colleagues for any questions or comments that anyone might have regarding the response to the grand jury report. Hearing none, seeing one. Alicia, do we have any questions from the public on this issue?
No, Mayor, I do not.
Thank you very much. And it goes to show that we're the city staff and police department doing a great job.
Well, I thank you very much. A little disappointed I didn't get any questions.
No.
But again, I, I want to thank, it's, it's very important with these grand jury reports, the outstanding work that all city staff has done. Which has enabled the police department to do what we've been able to do. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, absolutely. Kudos, kudos to you all. I will now bring it back to my fellow council members for action.
Good. D two with those great comments to the grand jury.
I second the motion.
Motion be, motion by Councilwoman Gallegos and seconded by Councilwoman Evans to approve item D two. Alicia, would you please call the roll call vote?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much for that, Alicia. We will now move on to item D three. Response to Madera County Grand Jury Final Report nine twenty dash zero six. Madera County and City of Madera Governments, Public Servants or Self-Serving Part Three. Madera Municipal Airport Closure of Runway eight point dash six. I believe city manager Rodriguez, do you have this?
I sure do. Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. Allow me to share my screen. So while, and the chief may think that he's not as eloquent as I am, I would disagree. The other thing he's not is he's not going to be as long-winded as I am. My, so my presentation, I will forewarn the council. It is a little on the lengthy side. However, I think it would be beneficial for both the council and the community that we provide a full understanding of the history of the airport and the closure of one of the two runways at the airport. So with that, so as the mayor said, the grand jury provided two reports to the city of Madera, one pertaining to the closure of runway eight two six, which is commonly referred to as the crosswind runway. And I'll get into the nomenclature in a few minutes. And then also to the police department. The grand jury noted that it's part three of the report. Within part three, there was three subsections to the report. The first two subsections of the grand jury report did not apply to the city, whether they were in response to the county. Whereas specifically, the closure of the runway, both the city and the county were requested respondents. I'm going to spare the council with some of the details that the chief discussed in terms of the penal code and in terms of the nomenclature of how we respond, if that's appropriate. And then I will get into some of the details. So going back to the same geographic area that we were discussing about the golf course. This is the city's airport. It currently, it is paved with two runways. We have the principal runway. And I apologize, it seems like I can never get the numbers right. It seems like I'm constantly inverting them. And then we have the crosswind runway, which is the smaller of the two runways located parallel to Avenue sixteen. The north arrow is on the lower right-hand portion of your screen for the benefit of the council. And so again, so we have the main runway. We have the crosswind runway. The focus of the report, the grand jury report, is the crosswind runway. And that's why I highlighted in yellow there. We have a fire station, which is not on this aerial photo because it is so new. That's fire station fifty-eight. That's also a focus point of the grand jury report. So again, so while it primarily focuses on the airport, there is discussion about the fire stations, fire station fifty-eight, which is, the council knows, opened up in November of twenty-twenty. We also have private hangars, and those are largely collected on the northern part of the airport. And then we have public hangars on the southern. Public being that they're owned by the city. So these are city-owned hangars. However, they're privately leased to individuals. If memory serves me, we have eighty-five hangars there. And we have, every one of them is leased, and we have a waitlist of about eighteen individuals who are hoping to lease one of our hangars. And then we have the FBO, which is along Avenue sixteen. And FBO is a fixed-based operator. And this is specifically, there's also discussion, going back to nineteen ninety-three, there is discussion about the operator right here. And that is also subject of the grand jury report. That's commonly referred to as the aerial applicator or the crop duster. So finding number one. The grand jury finds that the city and the county did not provide requested documentation. Very similar to what the city said, or to what the chief was saying earlier. This is a little challenging at times, and we are recommending that we disagree partially. And it's not that the city does not believe that it did or did not. Unfortunately, we simply feel that we do not have adequate information to provide a thorough response. One of the challenges is that when the grand jury approaches staff, staff cannot share that with other staff members or their colleagues. So oftentimes, we do not know who they're speaking with. With that being said, though, the city's open. We try to be transparent. We try to provide information in good faith, and we are always open. We have had trainings here at the city where we talk about this, and we're going to continue to do that. Finding number two. The grand jury finds that the city and the county did not provide adequate public notice for the closure of runway eight two six. Again, that's the crosswind runway. This, the city does disagree with this finding. And I'm going to get into every one of these documents. So this is the part where I'm going to be a bit long-winded. So going back to the runway, there was a nineteen ninety-three airport master plan. There was a twenty-fifteen Madera County-wide airport land use compatibility plan. That was both for the Madera Airport and the Chachilla Airport. I should add, though, that that report was not prepared under the auspices of the city. Rather, it was done so by the county. Because they operate the airport land use commission on behalf of the county. So that is not a city document, that's a county document. However, the city is required to implement it. We also have the Madera Municipal Airport Plan Update, which is commonly referred to as the twenty-sixteen plan. We also have the Airport Layout Plan in twenty-seventeen. And then I'll close it off with some additional public outreach that the city's done in the past two years. So going back, and this is still in regards to finding number two, which the city did not provide adequate public notice. So the nineteen ninety-three master plan. So when the master plan was prepared in nineteen ninety, the city prepared what's commonly referred to as an initial study, which resulted in a negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Guidelines. That requires public notification. That public notification, as far as we can tell, the staff, and we spent an enormous amount of time researching this, evidenced by the, I believe the final report was approximately twelve hundred pages in your staff report. We found evidence that that was completed. We also noted that on November the sixth of nineteen ninety-two, the Airport Advisory Committee Commission met. We provided a copy of their agenda. And that was followed by a second meeting in December the seventeenth. There was a planning commission meeting, November the twenty-fourth. That was, these are all duly public noticed meetings, and they're all pursuant to the Brown Act, the posting of agendas and all of the reports. And we did provide copies of every agenda and copies of the minutes for some of these in the staff report. Agendas for all of them, some of the minutes for some of them. And then also, there was a second planning commission meeting on December the eighth. And then subsequent to that, there was a meeting on March first nineteen ninety-three before the city council. At every one of these meetings, the nineteen ninety-three plan noted that the runway, specific, the crosswind runway, that it was identified as a restricted runway, and that if there were to change, it was going to be abandoned. So the seed had been planted back in nineteen ninety-three that this runway was already restricted. The FAA had already determined that the city was not eligible for funding for two runways. And if any changes, the runway would be abandoned. And that was discussed at these meetings, and it's evidenced in all of the plans that we provided in the response to the grand jury. So again, this goes back to nineteen ninety-two, but the plan was technically the nineteen ninety-three because that's when council approved it. Fast forward to that to twenty-fifteen, and this is when the Airport Land Use Commission prepared the twenty-fifteen Countywide Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which again, this was under the umbrella of the county. There was a workshop on August the fourth, twenty-fifteen, before the Airport Land Use Commission. And again, that's a county commission. There was a second meeting on August the twenty-sixth. I'm sorry, the meeting before, on August the twenty-sixth, was the Airport Advisory Commission, which is a city commission. On September the first of twenty-fifteen, it went back to the Airport Land Use Commission, which again, is a county commission. On September the ninth, Caltrans, the Department of Aeronautics, who's responsible for the planning of airports in the state of California, reviewed it, reviewed the draft plan and approved it. That eventually went back to the Airport Land Use Commission on September the twenty-ninth. Again, these are all meetings that are subject to the Brown Act. They all posted their agendas, and there's public notification for the Brown Act. Within the plan itself, it notes the city anticipates to close runway eight two six, which is restricted to ag uses once the FBO parenthetically fixed base operator lease expires in twenty-nineteen. So while the plan in nineteen ninety-three articulated or anticipated its closure, the twenty-fifteen plan made it very clear that that airport, or that the crosswind runway was going to close down. Moving forward to the following year. This was the airport plan updating narrative. This was discussed at the February eleventh, twenty-fifteen Airport Advisor Committee meeting. This is a city committee. It noted runway eight two six is to be abandoned when the ag spring operator lease expires in five to six years. So again, that's further evidence that public notice was provided because again, the Airport Advisory Committee meetings are posted and they're open to the public, and they are subject to the Brown Act. And then the airport plan, this was a city commission plan. This was in twenty-seventeen. So the twenty-sixteen was a component of the twenty-seventeen plan. The Airport Advisory Commission, again, a city commission, discussed this at three separate meetings, May the twenty-seventh, August the twenty-sixth, and May first. We provided copies of those agendas and minutes were appropriate. Again, the plan, the plan noted that runway eight two six would be abandoned at the end of its ag aerial applicator lease once it ended in twenty-nineteen. So the pattern has been very clear going back to nineteen ninety-three that the airport, that it was anticipated that the runway would close. Subsequent to that, as time had gone on, I arrived at the city. We have some new council members. And one of the things that we started to hear from the aviation community is that there was concern about the runway closing. We did have a city council workshop, which I think, or this existing six council members were in attendance. This was on August the twenty-first, where Chris Boyle, the planning manager at the time, provided an overview and provided some of the background. Subsequent to that meeting on September the ninth, city staff met with some of the local aviation group. Of course, it wasn't an enormous group, but we did meet, if memory serves me, probably seven or eight individuals where we specifically talked about the history of runway eight two six. On December third, twenty-nineteen, the Airport Advisor Committee met again and discussed the closure of the airport. On December the tenth, twenty-twenty, so about a year later, the Airport Advisor Commission met. However, we didn't want to note that a quorum was not established. However, for the members that were in attendance. But the purpose was not necessarily to tell them or to request a recommendation of its closure. It was simply to provide an update that the closure was on the horizon. And then this was discussed with council at the December sixteen, twenty-twenty meeting. So again, going back to nineteen ninety-three, there's a series of meetings where the closure, or the potential closure, is anticipated. And that's why staff felt that the prudent thing to do would be to disagree because from our review of the records, it's very clear that there has been plenty of public outreach. Finding number three. The grand jury finds that the city spent taxpayers' money to purchase additional acreage for a fire station. I'm sorry, got a little excited, let me go back. So this goes back to the nineteen ninety-three plan. This was the airport layout plan. This is a city plan. And I will zoom in, so no one has to try to squint. But this is the crosswind runway. And the north arrow, it shifted here. This is the principal airport runway. Here's the hangars. There's a note right here, number note fourteen. And note number fourteen says fire station future, parenthetically. That happened in nineteen ninety-three. Well, somewhere between nineteen ninety-three and the acquisition of the property for the airport, the city determined that that site was no longer a viable site. So the city agrees with the finding that taxpayer money was used to purchase additional acreage for fire station because the city purchased a property for fire station fifty-eight. However, the city disagrees with the underlying inference that the expenditure was somehow inappropriate. So the observation that the city expended taxpayer money is accurate. However, the placement of a city facility at the airport would not necessarily come at a reduced or no cost agreement. If the city were to purchase, if the city were to place the fire station at the airport, the city would have to purchase the land from the airport. So again, the city would have to purchase land from itself because the property that was purchased at the airport was probably used with FAA funds, but the city cannot simply transfer land from one department in enterprise fund to a non-enterprise fund to a general fund in department. So again, so the city did purchase the property at fire station fifty-eight. But to infer that that somehow was done inappropriate, that is incorrect. The other thing worth noting is that when fire station fifty-eight was being assessed, sixteen locations were examined. And the location that was identified in the nineteen ninety-three plan was not one of those locations. That location had already been determined to not be an appropriate location because of response times and probably access. And so again, so that location was not considered. Moving forward, though, between nineteen ninety-three and twenty-seventeen, when the plan was updated, the fire station was not identified on the new plans. So at some point, someone made a conscious decision that that was not an appropriate place. Obviously, I was not at the city. I think most of my colleagues were probably not here, and this council was not here. But based on our research, that's what we found. So it did come off the map, but again, plans are fluid. Finding number four. The grand jury finds that to facilitate the closure of runway eight two six, a renewal application for funding was not submitted. The city disagrees with this finding. Specifically, the FAA policy states that the Airport District Office can only fund a single runway at an airport unless the ADO has made a specific determination. I'm sorry, I have the same word twice there. Determination that one or more crosswind or secondary runways are justified. The FAA did not deem runway eight two six eligible for funding since FAA would only consider it as a crosswind runway if the wind coverage on the primary runway was less than ninety-five percent. Which runway twelve thirty, which again, that's the principal runway, provides adequate wind coverage ninety-eight point eight percent of the time. This was documented back in nineteen ninety-three, if I recall. And Public Works Director Foss can probably correct me on that. But that's originally why it was not considered as a required runway going back to nineteen ninety-three. So the city, even if it had applied, it would have been denied simply because it did not meet the criteria of the FAA for a secondary runway. And so that's the biggest reason why the runway is being closed, by the way. It's not eligible for funding from the FAA. So grand jury finding number five. The grand jury finds that the private interest in leasing the airport facilities was repeated, were repeatedly ignored. The city disagrees with this finding. One of the challenges is that we simply don't have adequate information to ascertain what leases this is regarding. One thing we've noted, at least in the past two years, is that interest in hangars has actually increased. And that's evidenced by construction of a hangar right now. We're in discussions with two potential additional hangars. And again, every one of the city-owned hangars is occupied. We have a waitlist of eighteen individuals who have expressed an interest in leasing a hangar. So those were the findings that we responded to. So this is the second part of the report. These are the recommendations now by the grand jury. The grand jury recommends that the city immediately, the city and the county, adhere to requests for public documents when requested by the grand jury. We completely agree. The city adheres to requests for all public documents when requested, just like any other individual pursuant to the Public Records Act. But again, part of the challenge with this is unfortunately, those of us that were responding are unaware which documents they're referring to. Recommendation number two. The grand jury recommends that immediately the city and the county adhere to the provisions of the Brown Act to provide clear, fair, and unambiguous public notice. We agree with this as well. All city meetings, obviously, I'm not providing responses on behalf of the county, simply the city. All city meetings are public meetings, and they're conducted openly and compliant to the Brown Act. And we record appropriate records pursuant to the Public Records Act. Recommendation number three. The grand jury recommends that the city refrain from carelessly spending taxpayer money. So this recommendation has been implemented. However, one of the challenges is that we feel compelled to address the term refrain, which implies the city has carelessly spent taxpayer money. We work very diligently to ensure that we're the best stewards of taxpayer dollars. Any appropriation of funds comes before the city council. In nearly every one of your staff reports before the council, we include a register of audit demand, which identifies every check that the city has made a payment of. And we're compliant, which is evidenced by the city's audits. All of our audits are online, I think, going back to twenty-sixteen. And all of our budgets are online going back, I believe, four or five years as well. Recommendation number four. The grand jury recommends that the city immediately maintain records and avail the city and the county of renewable lending opportunities. The city has a longstanding policy related to the retention of records. The city has a longstanding policy related to the retention of records and conformment with state law. We work diligently to ensure that funding opportunities are presented to staff and city council. And we strive to seek and pursue renewable funding opportunities in the best interest of the residents. I think specifically, this may be in regards to not seeking additional funding for the secondary runway. But again, the city was informed that it was not eligible for funding because it did not meet the criteria for to have a secondary runway at the airport. Recommendation number five, the grand jury recommends that immediately the city entertain the financial investment interest of private entities. A couple of things, we feel like we are currently experiencing unprecedented private investment at the airport and interest. I think that's evidenced by the hangar that's being constructed. We were in communication with two other private individuals that, actually three now that I think about it, that have expressed interest in constructing hangars at the airport. Every one of our hangars is occupied, we have a waitlist of 18 people. The other thing to further illustrate the city's commitment, the city recently purchased a sweet sweeper that's dedicated to the airport. One of the things that the Public Works Director Foss and I heard is that the city was not doing an excellent job of cleaning the runways, which was causing pebbles to damage private aircraft. And we heard the concerns and we purchased a sweeper. And that sweeper, it's been used today. With that being said though, one of the challenges when you're in local government, that we believe decisions should be based on the merits and substance of the matter at hand, not rather than an unrelated considerations or on the financial investment of private individuals. Rather, decisions, decision-making at the local level should be done on what's best for the community rather than specific individuals. And we did include that as a response to the grand jury. So with that being said, it is recommended that council review the proposed response and either recommend modifications or allow staff to submit it on behalf of the city. Again, I also understand it was a very lengthy report. It was, if memory serves me, it was 1100 or 1200 pages. Staff took a considerable amount of time to review it to make sure that we had appropriate records. And with that, I think that it's appropriate for me to thank some of my colleagues. We've had standing meetings for a couple of weeks now, for, actually, it's been more than a couple of weeks. Keith Helmuth has been joining us, Gary Conti, Yabi Salazar, Dan Foss, Adam Gonzalez, Alicia Gonzalez. And I apologize if I'm missing anyone, but we'd had a lot of people researching a lot of records. And again, that's evidenced by the stack of documents that we provided in response. And we specifically cited page numbers and quotations throughout the report. Our goal was not to dispute the grand jury report, rather, our goal was to find facts. And then we based our responses on the facts that we found it, and I think we've done just that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. And in the future, if you need to take a pause, by all means, you know, one of us can make a joke while you drink some water. I'm sure Mr. Lawson would like to jump in and contribute. He's very eloquent himself. I just want to commend yourself and your staff for doing a tremendous job at the airport. It is one of our crown jewels in our community. Very few cities across the United States have an airport in their vicinity. And in particular, I'd like to thank Mr. Foss for his work and due diligence and making sure that our airport is functioning well as it is. I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues if they have any comments or questions for Mr. Rodriguez on this report. I see none. Alicia, do we have any public comment at this time?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, no questions, Mr. Rodriguez. I think everyone's satisfied. I'd like to bring it back to the council for action.
Mayor, we approve item D3 as presented.
Motion to approve item D3 by Councilmember Montes, a second by Councilmember Rodriguez. Alicia, would you please call a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viejas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. The next item is D5, as we have pulled item D4. It is a budget amendment related to the November 3rd, 2020 consolidated presidential election. I believe this report is by our city clerk, Alicia Gonzalez. Alicia?
Yes, one moment, Mayor, will I pull up my screen here? And are you able to see my slide?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I bring before you item D5, it's a budget amendment related to the November 3rd, 2020 consolidated presidential election. A little bit of background, the city received an invoice in the amount of $127,670.15 for the election management of the November 3rd, 2020. For the, of the November 3rd, 2020 election. County rendered, the Madera County rendered services for the election of council members for districts 2, 4, 6, Mayor and Measure R. At the time the Measure R was being contemplated, initial estimates to place it on the ballot ranged between 90,000 to 100,000, depending on the number of registered voters to place on the ballot. Since then, staff was notified that the cost totaled $127,670.15. It is noted that the city's spare share exceeded projected costs, which may partially be attributed to safety measures due to the COVID-19 pandemic and Measure R. Staff initially budgeted $26,348 for the election, therefore, a budget amendment of $101,322.15 is being requested. Staffers requesting allocation of funds for the intergovernmental charges account and proposing that the general fund cover the cost of the election. The council may request to table the item to a future date and request that staff provide additional information. And that completes my report. If there are any questions from council?
Thank you very much, Alicia, for that report. We'll now bring it back to my colleagues. Do you have any comments or questions for the city clerk regarding item D5? I don't see any hands. Oh, yes, I do. Mr. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Alicia, looking at the invoice, I noticed that the invoice does outline the mayor, District 2, 4, 6, and the cannabis measure. This doesn't itemize like what it costs for every district or every, or like a separate cost for the measure, but rather all in, altogether? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I know that we had an estimate early on for Measure R. But I guess it was hard for me to kind of read between the lines and see where that big cost came from. I mean, and meaning like, was that all due to Measure R, the biggest, looking at the itemized invoice? I don't know where I could see that that big cost was due to that. So I was just curious to ask where that cost was. And last but not least, the SB 90 cost for possible future reimbursement by the state, can you elaborate on that?
On the SB 90 cost, Arnaldo, if you don't mind helping out with this question, I'm not too familiar with the SB 90 cost and how that's going to be reimbursed by the state. I apologize.
No worries, and I didn't mean to catch you off guard, I just, when I saw that, I wanted to see, okay, is that something that the city can get back and get reimbursed by the state at some point?
Can I, to answer a question, can that's something that we'll be working, come with the county elections on, to see if there's additional reimbursement? What we do know is that the elections this past election cycle exceeded previous election cycles, and some of that is attributable to the COVID-19 pandemic. When staff had originally prepared this year's budget, we looked at the last election from two prior years, and we noticed that that one ran roughly $26,000. And so when we estimated it, we said, it's about $26,000. And then with the addition of Measure K, which, I mean, I'm sorry, Measure R, we were informed by the county it was roughly 90 to 100,000. So even if you go in the high mark of 100,000 plus the 26,000 in comparison to the previous one, that roughly makes it about 126,000, and our final cost came in at 127, correct, Alicia?
That's correct.
Yeah, and so it's probably, some of it's probably attributable to that, but then some of it, again, was because of the COVID pandemic and some of the additional measures they had to take in terms of staffing and cleaning and resources that they had to put into it. And so that just created some additional challenges.
And that's correct, Councilmember Rodriguez. When I created the budget, I was new to my position, and I should have taken a better look at what council seats were up for the November election. And I kind of just copied off of that number and used it again for this election, not keeping in mind that additional seats were going to be up for election. So that also was, I didn't eyeball that amount quite well.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Alicia, maybe I misunderstood you there, but you said, when you said you didn't eyeball the additional, you meant that was a cost for one seat, or that was a cost for several seats in the last election?
I believe it was several, there was, I believe it was two and two, only three seats, and this time we had the four.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. And again, just to reiterate, I don't know when it comes to county elections and if they itemize those specific seats or the specific measures, it seems like everything's just bundled in with cost, right? And that's what I'm seeing here.
Yes, and actually, when we received the invoice, so I had to contact them to request the itemized bill. So just to kind of take a better look at those numbers, which they did provide right away in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your response.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Councilman Rodriguez kind of asked me questions, and it was answered with Arnaldo and our city clerk, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? And Alicia, thank you very much for your work, you do a really good job for us, and I really do appreciate your help, particularly me with the mayor's office. Alicia, do we have any questions or comments from the public?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the council for action under item D5.
I'm going to approve if I pass presented.
Second.
Didn't hear, there was a conflicting, could you repeat the second to that motion again?
Second, Councilmember Montes.
Mr. Montes, thank you very much. Motion to approve item D5 by Councilwoman Gallegos, second by Councilmember Montes. Alicia, would you please call a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viejas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with six yes votes and zero no votes.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Thank you very much for that. There are no administrative reports. We will move on to item F, Councilmember Reports and Announcement for Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and councilmembers to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies and at public events, to request updates, to initiate future agenda items, and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet other requirements for action. I will now call on City Councilmember Gallegos.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to report, I don't know if Councilwoman Rodriguez is, so I say the wrong, please correct me because I'm still new to this. We had a Madera County Transportation Commission meeting today. And one thing that I think our residents wants to know, and we want to know, is when is Highway 99 going to be finished? We were told a year ago they would do it in a year, but we had COVID, we have weather. So now they're saying end of June, first of July, that 99 will be done with three lanes on each side. We're still trying to find funding to finish up the completion of the three lanes on each side from Avenue 9 to 7. So they're looking to see where we can pull money together to finish up our valley here in Madera County and the city to expand. And so that's all I have to report from Madera County Transportation Commission. And if you have any questions, you can either contact Councilwoman Rodriguez or I, and we can answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I think Councilwoman Gallegos said it best. This was our second meeting now with Councilwoman Gallegos, Commissioner Gallegos. And I got to say that the MCTC is a great addition to have her. I did just want to add that there are some funds for the coronavirus that are being made available for certain projects regarding state highways and roads and what have you. And I know that was something that just came up pretty quickly, and I wanted to make sure I made our staff aware, especially Keith and your department there, if there's any projects that are ready. It's not to say that that's going to happen or anything like that, but it'd be a good idea for staff to contact the MCTC, maybe Ms. Taylor, and see if any of our projects can be added to the list. And see if some of those funds can certainly help improve some of the roads and transportation needs for our community. So that being said, I don't know if I mentioned the last time around, I did give my vaccine about a week ago, and I'm scheduled to take one here at the end of the month. I hope that if you haven't, that you do continue to get tested, get those numbers down, so we can continue to open the, we can continue to open the businesses that are desperately needed here in our community, and we can get back to normality. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all my comments, so thank you much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Montes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request, if it's possible, that cannabis ad hoc give us a status update on what's going on with cannabis, especially given those numbers that we just received. And I would also like to encourage everybody to, when it's your turn, when you're eligible to get your vaccine, so we can return to normal as soon as possible. I got my first yesterday, so doing everything that we can to try to get back to normal, get tested as much as you can as well. And that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good job on getting your vaccine. Thank you. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everyone. I went and, first and foremost, I'm getting my second shot on Monday. So I'll be all free and clear, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm glad that everyone else is getting their shot. Today, the mayor, Artemio and myself, we went and volunteered at the mosque and passed out food for the community, and that was really a good event. So there was a lot of people that came through, and there were a lot of people that were served. So thank you very much for that, Mayor, and for Artemio. So everyone, stay healthy, God bless, and have a good time.
Thank you. Councilmember Viejas?
Yeah, I'm just letting you guys know that I will get my second vaccine on Friday. So. I feel great.
Good, good.
That's it.
Okay, thank you for that. A couple of things. First of all, I would like to thank Ms. Evans? Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, it's fine, it's fine. Also, I want to say thank you to Cece, excuse me, Councilwoman Gallegos, and Dan Foss and the Public Works. I went out for a tour, and that place is remarkable. So if you haven't been, which I'm sure most of you have, I so, so, so enjoyed the tour. It was just, it was amazing, you know? Even though, at the beginning, it kind of smelled, but for the most Even though at the beginning it kind of smelled, but for the most part, for the most part, it was amazing. Thank you, Dan Foss, thank you. Cece, thank you, everyone. You guys do a dynamic job out there, so thank you very much. Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Funny, but it's fine. As I was saying, I wanted to thank a teacher at Cesar Chavez Elementary School for inviting me to participate in a Zoom class with her, Sally Lampier, at Cesar Chavez Elementary School. We actually had three classes participate and they wanted to have, the question for myself was, why did I want to run for office as an elected official, both as a city councilman and as a mayor now? So I thought it was a really good civic question for the teacher to present to the students and discussing everything and anything regarding elections. But I found it particularly funny that the very first question that I was asked was, when was I going to put more monkey bars at the school? Because this one student felt that it was my duty to provide more monkey bars. So I promised that I would do everything in my power to talk to Madera Unified School District to get monkey bars out there at the school. So I thought that was really good. Also, I wanted to talk about the recent stimulus that is being provided, both at the state level and at the United States government level by President Biden and Congress, that monies are being sent out to not only provide help to folks who need it at this time, but also to provide infrastructure improvements in our country. And I think that's very significant. And I want to thank our government for taking this action to help people at this very difficult time. And as Arnaldo also put out in an email today, that there are programs and grants out there for folks with help with utilities and rent, paying the mortgages, which will in turn help our business partners in our community. Our businesses also need help. So I want to thank everyone involved for doing that. I want to thank staff for being here and helping us out, do our jobs well. And you do your jobs well. Thank you very much for all that you do. I want to thank you for joining us at the city council meeting. Thank you very much for helping us out. We will now go into closed session. And so I will ask our city attorney to please take us into closed session, Ms. Montoy.
I will do that. There are quite a few items for you in closed session this evening. First, you have Conference with Labor Negotiators under Government Code 54957.6 with your representatives, Arnaldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, and Shay Johnson. And the organizations are the General Bargaining Unit, Madera Affiliated City Employees Association Midmanagement Employees Group, Madera POA, and the Law Enforcement Midmanagement Group. Second, we have Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation under Government Code 54956.9D2, and a say workers comp claim by Juventino Camtu. Then we have Conference with Real Property Negotiators under Government Code Section 54956.8. The property is one parcel, APN 035080026. Your negotiator is Keith Helmer and the negotiating party is Jason Sanders. And the under negotiations are the price and the terms. And finally, we have Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9D4, 1K City of Madera versus High Speed Rail Authority. And that is it, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much, Hilda. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now be moving into closed session, so I will say good night. Thank you very much.
I now call for the adjournment of this meeting. It is now ten oh nine PM. I want to thank everyone for your participation. Get a good night's sleep. Take care of yourselves and we'll see you soon. Hasta mañana si os quiere. Good night.
Good night. Bye bye.